That's right. Boom. I don't.
Hi Steph. I know that's pretty cool.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Chris?
Here.
Haley?
Here.
Jessie? Brian?
Here.
Debbie?
Here.
Eva? Michael? Alright, any agenda adjustments?
I do not have any.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 4th, 2024, as presented, as well as the minutes of the special meeting of March 27th, 2024. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstained? Thank you. Motion carries. Next up, we'll move to presentations.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Walsh, Herman High School principal, to come to the podium. He is going to be speaking a little bit to the Class A State Championship casting crew for One Act.
Not supposed to do that, but I just wanted to make sure he was on. So it's my distinct pleasure this evening to be able to come down to the podium and just say a few things about One Act before I introduce our fantastic director, and she will take it from there. Herman High School has been competing in the One Act Play Festival for over 30 years. Our drama department here, for a number of years, excelled 2020 hit, and it, as you all know, changed the world, especially if you sang, or spoke, or any type of performing art. You hired Christie Robinson last year. You may or may not remember that. It was a super hire for us. And she told me when I hired her that she was going to bring back several of our programs. And I told her, I may have told her to slow her roll, and it was going to take some time to do that. She reminded me of this when we had the great news that indeed our One Act had won Class A State Championship. Now, this is the third time in school history that this has happened. It's a great accomplishment. I'm thrilled about this. And just so the board understands, this is the same as if a basketball team wins a state championship, or the debate teams wins a state championship, or the softball team, or what have you. This is the same honor. And so this is a big deal. One of the differences when One Act wins, we then not only recognize them, but we have them do another performance. So we'd never have the basketball team play another game. But One Act will be performing Wednesday night on this stage again at 6:30. Christie, we'll talk about that in just a minute. But I am thrilled. If you have not yet seen the video of their reaction when they won, or the director's reaction when they won, it is worth going on to their Performing Arts Facebook page. The link is there, and you will not be disappointed in their excitement. As I said, this is a program that has been rebuilt way faster than I ever imagined. When the students got on the bus to head to states, I am jealous, and I told them that as I was on the bus. They probably didn't listen to a word I said, but I was jealous because of this opportunity. And to be a state champion, there's a very limited few who get this opportunity. They took that opportunity, they seized it, despite weather, despite being moved, despite this, it was the weekend of our great storm, although we have another one coming. But they got moved around, and they ended up, their time slot got moved, and despite that, they still brought it home. So, pretty huge and exciting. With that, I'm going to turn the mic over to our director and our Performing Arts teacher, Christie Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, and members of the school committee for having us this evening. This has been a super exciting year, super exciting season for the theater department here at Herman High School. This group of wonderful young artists over here took first place at their regional competition, beating out one of the most difficult brackets in the entire state, MDI specifically. Two weeks later, we advanced to the Class A State Competition, where literally everybody had their eyes on Herman. Everybody did. They all wanted to know, how did we do it? How did you do it? And I don't give away any of my secrets. So, but I will say, it never got old, and it never gets old, when somebody comes up to me and says, how did you do it? And let's talk about your production. If anybody wants to talk to me about it, I am willing. I am happy to speak with anybody. Our road to success did not come without its challenges, as Mr. Walsh started to say for us. Despite cast illness, that was a big one, constant rescheduling, constant rescheduling, and the immense stress that Mother Nature put us through with snow, and ice, and power outages, and all the things that come with that thing called weather, and winter in Maine. We still managed to come out on top with a 19-point lead over Gorham that got runner-up. So this is the first state win for Herman High School's One Act since 2010, and dare I say, we're just getting started. We're really looking forward to next year. We have six theater arts classes that are available and being offered, and we will have three main stage productions being offered here on this stage at the high school. And it's important, really important, to keep the buzz going and not stop here, whether or not we are state champions or not. The students and the community have been reminded of how crucial the arts are in our lives, and people are paying attention again, and that's really important. I hope they never stop. I certainly will not. I personally would like to thank Mr. Walsh for the genuine support that he has given me and the students, since I came here a year and a half ago to Herman High School. My appreciation for him and the students and this program, it's deep. It's deep. And to help us celebrate the conclusion of an incredible season, we invite everybody to attend our final, final, all capital letters, encore performance before the snow blesses us once again on Wednesday, April 3rd, at 6:30 PM here in the auditorium. It's a perfect opportunity for everyone to see what the entire state of Maine theater has been talking about. So, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
So at this time, we're going to call the students up. We have certificates, which I know you're really excited to get, but we really want to read your name into the record, because this is a very long-lasting document. And so if you would come up the stairs here, and you can either fist bump us or shake our hands. We'll give you the certificate. You go right around the table, and then, please do not feel obligated to stay for the remainder of the meeting. So you can bow out gracefully, and nobody will judge you for that. Okay? Alright. Callie Alexander. Tristan Allen. Thank you. Ellie Aman. Peyton Anton. Watch out for the chorus.
Michaela Bemis.
Finnegan Brown.
Sterling Hall.
Bailey Heel Hedger.
Madison Hobbs.
Isabella Engels.
Ryan McNally.
Sophie Peterson.
Olivia Putnam.
Lily Raleigh.
Kristine Raymond.
Ashlyn Stitham.
Cole Willis.
Anne Christie Robinson.
Good job.
Thank you.
Can we get one final round of applause for them? Congratulations, guys. Now we're going to move on to public comments from the last meeting. So I need to pull up my notes. Actually, I'm going to come back to those in just one second. Do we have other committee acknowledgements?
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Yeah, I just wanted to send a shout-out to the high school students that represented UTC and Herman High School at the State Skills USA competition, and that we did get some, brought home some medal on that one. There were four bronze, three silver, and one gold award from those competitions. And I just wanted to say thank you for representing Herman High School and Herman community.
I just wanted to start off by saying I hope everyone had a great holiday weekend. I know I did. It was really great to spend some time with my family. So, some updates at Herman High School. Tomorrow, we'll have our blood drive. So we have a lot of new students that will be donating blood, as well as teachers, and this benefits the American Red Cross. That'll take place from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and the students will be taken out of study halls. They won't be missing any classes. Last Saturday, we had our dance. We had just under 300 students attend, so we raised over $2,000. I heard a lot of great things. Everyone said it was super fun. I wasn't there very long, because I get tired easily. But last Thursday, the senior class did a project grad fundraiser at Texas Roadhouse, and one of the servers came up to me and said that it was one of the most successful fundraisers he had ever seen at the restaurant. So that was really great. I know we raised at least $1,000. Like, it was wonderful. On March 15th, there was a mental health seminar at the University of Maine, which a lot of Herman students attended, and they said great things about it. It was a very informational seminar to attend. Key Club had the induction ceremony and inducted, was it more than 30 new members?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was really great. And additionally, Key Club will be going down to Springfield, Massachusetts this weekend for the District Educational Conference. I'll be leaving tomorrow on the district board, so I'm going to set up for the event and welcome everybody there, which I'm super excited for. And then, back at the beginning of March, we had 8th grade step-up day and the club fair, which went really well. The students at Herman High School set up tables for their clubs, and there was a lot of participation from the 8th graders. They signed up for a lot of different clubs, showed a lot of interest, so that was really great. And we gave out a lot of Herman merchandise, so they seemed excited, a little bit nervous still, but they seemed really excited to come up to the high school and start this new chapter of their lives. And I just wanted to update some things that have been going on in my life. I recently represented Herman at the Miss Maintain USA Pageant, and I placed as the second runner-up. So it was really great to represent my hometown and community at a state level. Additionally, I received a $1,000 grant from the Rotary Breakfast Club in Bangor for my nonprofit platform, and that focuses on youth mental health. And I also sang the National Anthem at the State House, and I was invited by Joe Badachi to sing that, and I got to represent the school. So that was really wonderful.
Carrying on the good news, one of our students here, Alex Smith, who is the battalion commander of our GRTC program, has recently been accepted into the US Air Force Academy, which is huge, because it has about a 12% acceptance rate. So, a big congratulations to him. I know he's a big role model to a lot of people. With even more fundraising news, the new fundraising event, the new way we're doing things, has been a giant hit. The softball and baseball teams have both made $10,000 respectively, and the track team and the tennis team are just starting to get into the fundraiser now. So that's making a lot of money. The National Honor Society will be attending the Literacy Volunteers of Maine event in six days, and we'd like to welcome the new co-op lacrosse team, lacrosse team that Herman will be a part of now, for more sports options for students.
I want to thank the student representatives for always sharing with us all the wonderful things that you guys are doing. Congrats, Eva, in honoring and, you know, being the representative for Herman. We're so proud that you were representing us. I just want to mention too, Junior Achievement is a program of teaching financial literacy to kids in all school levels. And I definitely would encourage all committee members, any members of the public that really want to make a difference in the lives of kids, to volunteer in a classroom. It's a five-week session. I know that we're bringing it into the 3rd, 4th grade, 5th grade, and I'm doing a high school session. So I really would encourage any committee members that want to make a difference to really get out there and get in the classroom and do so. As far as the comments from last time, Greg Newell had some concern about why won't this committee be honest with the citizen and parents and tell us what's really going on. I just want to reference the December superintendent's report, because the school department appropriately reported the malware incident to the proper authorities and our insurance company, and the school department complied with all directives and recommendations to appropriately resolve the issue. We have nothing to hide. If there's any specific concerns, I'd encourage you to reach out to Mica or myself. I know that Ed Ford had a question, it was the same question that was asked at the town council meeting last week during the school budget workshop, and I know the town council asked Mica to ask our attorneys to provide clarification. So, Mike, I know you're probably going to check with Drummond and Woodson. It's in regards to the unassigned fund balance. And so clarification will be provided on that. And the Administrative and Finance Committee reviewed the transportation needs in preparation of the 2025 school budget. This is in reference to transportation. And the school department's going to conduct further analysis of our transportation needs prior to the beginning of the '26 budget process. Again, if there's any specific concerns, I'd encourage everybody to reach out to Mica or myself. So that was what we had at that time. Now we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on agenda items, contribute information that may be of interest to the school committee, or ask clarifying questions. Please wait to be recognized and identify yourself before speaking. This is not the time to register complaints or promote a personal agenda. Please remember that you may not identify any person by name or job function. And we'd like to welcome Regina Leonard.
This one? Okay. Regina Leonard, Herman. Just a couple of things I wanted to ask following up from, specifically Thursday, Mr. Grant, if you could provide some clarification through email to me or back at the next meeting when it comes to the insurance over the lawsuit for discrimination. Because the last time we asked you to clarify that here, it was the understanding that it was going to be completely covered, and then at the meeting of the night, I was confused, and then you said it wouldn't be unless there was a judgment. And so going further into that, when you stated that we're not going to settle, that's concerning when it comes to the cost that that could end up being, and exactly what the insurance does cover, what the cap is, and et cetera. So if you could provide some updates on that with some more details to clarify things a little better, I'd appreciate it. I did actually email you, because the current budget that's online, and we talked about that the 27th, it's still not updated to the current one. And then there's some mathematical errors that need to be corrected. I checked it on my way here tonight, and it's still not updated. And then another statement at the meeting, Mr. Grant, was in regards to the FCC investigation and the legal fees, and you said that that ended in September, and so that's why the legal fees are lower. But October, November, December's bills were all still really high, so I'm confused. If it wasn't part of that, then what would the need for them to be so high? So if you could explain that as well. My next thing is to the chair. It was really disappointing to me. I think that, you know, we've been doing this now, I can say, for three years, and that we need to be fostering open communication, whether you like to hear it or not. Everyone needs to be heard and have a voice, and that includes Mrs. Kizer. And we've watched you try to stop her from speaking twice, and then you tell her to speak up there, and then she can't. So I don't understand the need, or the reason why, to just not let her be heard. It is so appalling to me. It is violating her rights. Just let her be heard. There has been other committee members up there that have gone on their little tangents when they had things to say, and it was totally fine. So if Mrs. Kizer wants to be heard, she should be heard, and you should be fostering that, especially as the chair. If we need to move forward and start to heal the divide in this town, open communication is key. In the beginning of the year, you said, we can do better, and I'm still waiting.
Thank you so much. Now I'd like to welcome Greg Newell.
Greg Newell, Herman. To the comment about the ransomware attack, yes, that was one virus. According to the DNS Albany receipts, there were four Trojans that were also found, and nowhere in the ransomware notification or anything else did it talk about it. It talked about finding it in November. Well, the four Trojans were found in October, the beginning of October. So, again, being transparent. So, on to the comments I was actually...
Mr. Newell, can you just use the mic, because I can hardly hear you. Thanks.
Sorry. There we go. Is that better? Alright. So, on to the comments I was going to make tonight. I've had many questions about the school budget, and I've asked them at Finance Committee, as I was told that was the proper place. Very yet, I hope to ask them at the budget workshop. But that has never happened. Even the school, even a school committee member said it would happen, but it still hasn't taken place. And a workshop and a committee are two different things, according to the dictionary, unless the dictionary is wrong. At the town council meeting last week, a member of the school committee stated the following. I will try again. We'll try it one more time. Nah, it's not going to play. Maybe we'll try it one more time. So, not a one. So, this is, well, this surprised me, as I did not think that was the way to go about asking questions on the budget. But since the statement makes me believe that if I have questions, I need to send Mr. Grant emails, so that is just what I'm going to do. I'm also going to inform everyone that if they have questions about the budget, to email the superintendent. So I, hopefully you'll look forward to seeing lots of emails from me about all the questions I have about the budget. Thank you all, and have a very good night.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to personnel. Employment?
You have two people in front of you for employment. One, I've already hired, that's Braden Greaves. The computer support technician position has been open for a long time. We have been, obviously, we really, we're looking for somebody that we felt met the needs... needs of the district. And we've moved that to the top of the search engine a couple of different times. And so pleased to announce, I believe he started last, today? It was today, yeah. So he started today and very excited to add him to the team. And also, we are looking to employ a phys ed health teacher. Please bear in mind that this is not the health teacher full-time classroom position. This is mostly physical education down in the gymnasium here at the high school. And I'd like to recommend Taylor Bajinski for that one-year phys ed slash health teacher position.
I make a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation to employ Braden, how do you say his last name? Greaves?
Greaves, yes.
Greaves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So you are moving to approve that because that wasn't written as a motion? So you are making a motion for that specifically to clarify?
Yes. All those in favor?
Well, I was with her.
Yes. All those opposed? All those abstained?
I'm going to abstain because it's not a decision--
Yep. Perfect. Motion carries. I make a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation to employ Taylor Bajinski. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up, you're just going to update on co-curriculars?
Yeah, those co-curriculars are just new to the, well, excuse me, two are new to the position. Those are volunteer assistants. We appreciate their time and that is for your information.
Thank you. Now I want to open it up to public comment for old business. I'll close public comment for old business. I make a motion to excuse from the regular committee meeting, Deb Koalas and Michael, and from the special meeting, Jesse Keith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, and we'll take these individually. I make a motion to approve the second reading to adopt policy DFF, Student Activities Funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, I make a motion to approve the second reading of policy GBEBA, Dress and Grooming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, I make a motion to approve the second reading to rescind policy IGDG, Combined Funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next, I make a motion to approve the second reading of policy JED, Attendance as Amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to open it up to public comment yet again for new business. I'll close public comment for new business.
You have in front of you or in your packets, you have an agreement, an interlocal agreement for an educational service center. This was formerly PREP that provided a significant amount of professional development. It's based, the dues are based upon the number of employees in the district. And they are reforming and have gone through the process of creating a new service center now to be called, it's a little bit different than PREP, but the Penobscot River Educational Service Center. And as obviously one of the superintendents who sits on that committee or on that group, one of the major focuses is going to be on cost sharing and trying to continue to find ways in which we as districts, as regional, can save costs and work together with Retsor Contract Services. I know right now, one of the things that they are planning on doing is a regional enrollment study with the help of University of Maine. And so there's a lot of good communication and ideas that come out of that. And so they are obviously, again, reforming, if you will, into a new interlocal agreement. And it's, actually, we have a specific motion for that agreement.
I move that the Penobscot River Education Partnership Interlocal Agreement for Education Service Center be approved substantially in form presented to this meeting in that Herman School District, enter into an agreement and become an initial member of the Penobscot River Educational Partnership established by said agreement, subject to approval of said agreement by the Commissioner of the Department of Education. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How does this differ? I wasn't familiar with last year's contract. So if they've reorganized, what does the reorganization, how does it differ from what they had last year?
The primary difference is going to be that Spruce is going to get pulled under this agreement. And so Spruce is going to operate as a entity underneath PREP, well, sorry, not PREP, Penobscot River Educational Service Center. So it is going to envelop Spruce. And like I said, they really want to focus on cost sharing. That's one of the major focuses of the superintendents is what services, whether it's busing, fuel, bidding for contracts, what services can we share outside of professional development at Spruce that will make things more affordable in this region? So those are the two, I would say those are the two primary focuses.
When I was reading through, I couldn't see a cost to us being in it. Is there an additional cost to us joining?
No, we pay based upon the number of staff. It's a, it's a flat fee.
Okay, so there won't be a change to the budget for it?
No.
Okay. Chris, is this something Spruce obviously supports?
Yeah, we met on Thursday to review that budget and Deb was there representing Herman's district and we were introduced to this concept as well. And Mike on the eyelid, it's exactly what he said. The same dollars that we're currently spending are just going to funnel into this new designation and it's going to open up a lot more funding at the state level to save money in combined services.
Any other discussion?
Can I just say at that meeting, what the opportunity is, is for more buying power, more bidding power, and also to be able, and I'm going to abstain on this vote because I voted on it in our own district on Thursday. But one of the things that they said is they would be able to put somebody in a position to go after grant money and to be able to focus on the grant money that's available for the state, you know, through the state and through the federal, that they may not be accessing now because they'll have somebody that can do that, bring it to the superintendent and have a wider view of the opportunities. So I just wanted to share that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next up, Mica for the bus purchase.
Yep, so obviously we have a budget in place that allows for the purchase of a bus. And, but that is something that we specifically need to also vote on. So I just need approval to, and you know how you're doing it, we're, we're moving forward with the, you know, no lease, buy the bus outright. So I just need approval to spend the money to buy a bus.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of a bus. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Go ahead.
I feel like we just voted on this like twice already this year. I know one was supposedly for the maybe fiscal money of last year. Can you just clarify, is this, this is out of the '23-'24 budget?
This is for FY '25, for next year's budget.
Because we have to order it, correct?
Mm-hmm. It's going to come out of the FY '25 budget, proposed budget.
And did you say that the, the state handles how the bids and where the buses come from and the cost and all of that? Did you say something to that effect?
I didn't say anything to that effect at the council meeting, but somebody did. And yes, there's only two brands of buses that you can buy. So we have a few options as far as, do we want security cameras? Do we, you know, there's a few small options that we have. Some say over, but we buy buses that have cameras and that are, that's what I'm looking for, approved by the state.
And so it's my understanding we get some of that money back. What's the turnaround time of that for the budget as far as spending money and refund?
Yeah, sorry, I'd have to ask Jamie. I don't know what the turnaround time is to get reimbursed for a school bus. I'm sure it varies by year. Is it in the ED 279, Jamie?
ED 279, excuse me, as a, this whole line, I don't know, 279. For FY '25, being a runner-up, I don't want to give you a wrong number, but if the payments to the district start a year after the approved bus purchase. So this would be, this would be our purchase for the '25 to receive the funding back in '26, so we've got funding coming in '25. It's always after, a year after the bus.
Thanks, Jamie.
Any other discussion?
So the state has requirements for the timeline in which you can purchase a bus. So there's two different types of buses that we have. There can either be a 10-year purchase or a 15-year purchase. They outline the minimum mileage, the minimum mileage before they approve it. So this has been a state-approved bus that is already in our budget. I believe it was an 86-pack bus that we've already done the research on.
Yeah, 84 or 86, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next up, we're going to move on to administrative reports and we're going to take them as presented.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I add, sorry?
Yeah, I was going to ask you to speak to the comment that was asked last time about the survey and why it wasn't done. If you can just--
Oh, yeah. I had looked at doing, as you know, one of my goals last year, not this year, but last year, was to conduct a staff survey. After talking with Maine School Management, they recommended against that. They said there's not a survey that would be all throughout reliable and valid that I should use, that would be any way, shape, or form tied to my evaluation. So I did not conduct a staff survey as part of my Superintendent's goal. So just a follow-up from question last meeting. I would like to also add, I just want to highlight the other under my Superintendent's report. I'm planning on sending it this evening. I'll send it tonight via email. I won't send an alert for the K-12 parents via text message until tomorrow. As you know, we have a pretty significant event happening on April 8th. And we, as a region, have been talking a lot about, you know, the safety of students, the significance of the event, but also the importance of the school day. And so after talking with several superintendents, most of the superintendents in our region, and I know many of them have gotten their boards to either, you know, verify this or just, you know, run it off their boards, they're planning on having a full day of school. And I think that a full day of school is the right thing to do on this day. I think students need to be in school. Certainly, we will excuse parents and guardians who want to have their students either not there that day or get them early. That is obviously their right to do and it's, it is a unique and amazing opportunity. That being said, our bus run for our elementary school students starts at 3:20 usually, somewhere in that range, and ends around 4 o'clock. And putting the students on the bus during the height, if you will, I don't know if that's the correct terminology, but putting them on the bus where they would potentially be unsupervised from direct supervision to then, I think, naturally look at the sun or the lack thereof that day is dangerous. And we just can't, we can never guarantee safety, but we feel like kids are going to naturally want to look because it's a unique experience, right? And we, the PTA, is it called PTA Melissa in your building? PTA, thank you. The PTA in Melissa's building, they did buy glasses for all the students, which is great and we're thankful for them and for that. However, we feel to get our school day in, but to also ensure that our students are safe, we are going to hold buses till about 3:45 on Monday. That way, buses will pick kids up about 3:45, 3:50, we'll be home and done our runs around 4:30. Parent pickup will be normal, you know, 2:55, 3 o'clock. And again, that's, parents have the right to do that. And what we'll do is we'll, they'll have a watch party or something they're planning at the elementary school. And I appreciate their diligence and working with the teachers' union and, and obviously the staff, Mr. Davis, for working with the bus drivers. We just feel like that strikes the best balance outside of, we tried looking at, oh, if we bump it up an hour and we get them on the bus at 2:30, but then we got to bump the high school up an hour. It just, it's just a very messy and things have to go perfectly. And with buses and transportation, it almost never goes perfectly. We feel like holding the bus for 25 minutes is the most reasonable thing to do. So I am, I have a letter ready to go and I will be sending that out tonight. I just wanted to say that tonight in case there was strong resistance to that idea. I'm not looking for a motion, but just wanted to put it out to the committee just to get a general sense of like, yeah, we like that idea and that will be the plan. It'll probably be the cloudiest day we have all year, but that will be the plan for Monday, April 8th.
I have a few questions for you. Down below where it says, next meeting dates, it says April 27th. That's a Saturday. Do you mean the 30th? On your report?
Yes, I'm sorry. I meant April 30th, not 27th. So the tech committee will be April 30th and the policy committee will be April 30th.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the other question I had was regarding the IT report where it said they were doing e-waste. Did you just make sure that, were the investigations going on, that you ran that by them and they were okay with us doing and removing and destroying?
Yes, I have spoke with the attorney about that.
I've got a couple of things. Oh, were you going to go on to something else that you had here?
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank the principals for the ALIS update. I'll be reaching out to you guys in a more appropriate way to, it just interests me. So I'll be, I'll be trying to get in touch, getting some more info on that. Mr. Grant, thank you for reaching out and working with Deputy Boyd on the, I've been calling it a security assessment, but it's a facilities review, safety, which will be going on in the coming week. So I recognize the sensitivity of some of the information that may come from that and would appreciate any information that could be shared with the committee or with the community, but more importantly, thank you for, for moving forward with that. And I realize that some of that may, may complement some of our ALIS principles. And I saw the note that the SRO, that were following some of their recommendations and upgrades to align with the ALIS. So hopefully those two things will link together and that we can, you know, help with those facility issues, or facility improvements, I guess is a way to put it, to, to make a safer environment. As far as a vision for, for the graduate, I'm going to get with you, Mr. Walsh. I really like that. So really interested to see how that'll help the overall achievement and student outcome. I realize it's a pilot program, but that, that looks really good. On the page, reference the growth goals. I mean, the, the whole piece of student achievement, I'd really like to see us as a committee and as an administration have a forum where we can positively talk about our achievement goals and start moving down the road of, I always was, I was a resource manager where if you want to achieve a goal, you have to apply the resource to go with it. So if we want to achieve a goal in '27, then we need to start talking about the budget requirement for '26 now, which is kind of crazy because I'm about sick of budget. But, you know, that's the way I'd like to be thinking so that we can make a honest goal for what we'd like to see in '27 and start applying the resources and the planning to achieve it as soon as possible. The note on curriculum, I saw that the testing was coming up and that that's an IT-heavy event. And just checking with you, Mr. Grant, I know that they mentioned that the IT department was involved, had been contacted. Do we see any issues that may be coming up that the IT department wouldn't be able to manage the, the scheduled testing?
No, we're actually very excited due to some of the improvements. We, we think it's going to be a year where we can test multiple grades at a time, which we're excited about. So, yeah, no, we don't anticipate any, will a student have trouble logging in? Will the test, right, the day, the classroom-to-classroom stuff? That will always happen. That will always happen. But from a network sustainability, we're not worried.
Okay, great. And then thank you, on the facility side, and the superintendent on the PFAS update. For those that don't know, the school's PFAS is, is, test was positive, we're not doing bottled water anymore. And I'm keen to the financial concerns of the filters that, that I'd like to discuss later on, see if there are some other options that we can look at for funding those filters in the future. Thank you.
We'll take the finance report as--
Sorry, Seth. Sorry, may I ask you a couple of other questions?
Yep.
I don't, I'm, during public comment, it was brought up about the retirement, and we were going to talk about funding that, or I've never heard a discussion. Is there any--
That was going to be in the finance committee. They were going to look into that for the future.
I didn't hear that. Okay, discussed. I mean, I heard it there, but I didn't hear it discussed at the meeting.
It would send it off to finance committee, and we just haven't had a chance to look at it. I mean, we're, we're still pretty deep in budget, so.
Yep. We'll take the finance report as presented, unless there was any follow-up questions from the last meeting. For committee reports, do we have a facilities safety committee update? When is that next?
We will hopefully have a Homeland Security visit on Friday. Whether, we'll see how that impacts things. And then what we will do is we will either, I, I don't, we will schedule a meeting to discuss the findings of that review. Make sure I call it the right thing. So not sure, we have a rough timeline. I'll be asking on Friday, how long is this going to take to get back? And then when I get the report, we'll schedule the meeting. So we'll have a facilities meeting to look at that report. I would hope, may? I would think.
If I could just, if I could just make one finance comment, and it should have been really an acknowledgement, but the, the change in philosophy this year and the way in which we looked at the budget, I just wanted to say thank you to the administrators, and I'm sure it was, it reached all the way down to the teachers as far as the way in which we are looking at the budget with the intent not to impact what we have for services, but to, as Mr. Grant put, recalibrate our budget. And I think it was a really great process, and hopefully, we can improve on it. But thank you for your patience and your help with it, because it was, it was, as I've been told, I can't say, but it was an emotional event at many levels, and, and I just appreciate the effort that was put into it.
Absolutely. Anything else for the finance committee update? Policy committee will be meeting at the end of the month. Did we have any particular policies that we were going to review?
We're going to be reviewing some scholarship policies. And I had another one. I don't know off the top of my head. The agenda will be posted, April 30th is Tuesday, so the agenda will be posted on the 25th, April 25th.
I know we haven't had a tech committee meeting in, because of budget negotiations, but I see that one's been scheduled, and I appreciate Alex's report in the reports as a separate item.
Yeah, we just plan on having a report out on what's going on. He and I will meet beforehand and talk about anything that might need to be an agenda item and a review of where he's at so far. So, and there'll be some testing, you know, how to test and go, some things like that. Just think it'll be good to keep it, you know, keep it going and as we embark on a lot of changes.
Could we also have, just grab my interest, that pads has a revised reporting system for the K-4 in Power Schools. We just kind of have a quick discussion of what that, that is, just, it interests me. So I'm sure there's something the tech committee needs to action, but it's just something that'd be appropriate for that committee to--
Any Spruce update?
Other than what I've already shared about meeting last week for budgets, we've had our last meeting of this, of the year, and looking forward to see how this new service agreement comes together.
Excellent. Possible future agenda items will go around. Chris?
I'm okay.
Haley?
I'm okay. Brian?
Just the Power School K-4 I mentioned.
Debbie? Michael?
Nothing.
Thank you. Next, I make a motion to approve the five warrants as listed below. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. I make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to 1 MRS A4056D, Discussion of Labor Contract Negotiations with the Herman Education Association Teachers at 7:23 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Oh, yeah. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.